Okay, thank you very much. Thanks to everyone to the May 13th, 2020 Planning Commission's the U V Dyna Meeting. Liz, could you take roll of people here tonight?
Thank you. To ensure the accuracy of roll call, I'll call all commissioners regardless of if I can see them on WebEx or not. Commissioner Douglas. Commissioner Agnew.
Present.
Commissioner Bennett. Commissioner Olson. Commissioner Velavuli. Commissioner Strauss.
Here.
Commissioner Thorson. Commissioner Berube.
Here.
Commissioner Miranda. Chair Nemirov.
Here, thank you very much. Tonight, we're having our meeting, as everyone knows, on WebEx as we have been having for, it's our third meeting. We have one matter on our agenda tonight, and then if people want to call in, we'll give them a call number to call in. Does anyone, has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda? Does anyone have any changes to the agenda?
I'm over will the agenda as submitted.
Thanks, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. Liz, if you could do a roll vote, as you mentioned earlier, we're doing roll votes on everything so we have a clear record of who's voting and how they're voting.
Commissioner Douglas. I'm sorry, Commissioner Agnew.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson. Commissioner Strauss.
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson.
Aye.
Commissioner Berube.
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda.
Aye.
Chair Nemirov.
Aye, thank you. And so then we have, we have the meeting minutes from our last meeting, April 29th, and everyone had a chance to review those. Does anyone have any comments? I had just one thing which I spoke to Carrie about before the meeting, and I thought I'd toss this out, we can discuss this also. We had, and we are having, a lot of public participation by comments of the people submitting to Better Together or voice messages they're leaving for staff, or comments they're also submitting via the online form as well as Better Together. And I thought that it would probably be useful to make a note of that in the minutes, just say that we're getting a lot of participation, perhaps give those numbers. Carrie or Liz, do you guys have any thoughts on that, about a way to do that?
My thought is that I believe it is a very good idea to do that. We should have a note to that effect. What we could do is, there's no urgency for you to approve these tonight. We could propose some language, put them in the minutes, and then bring it back to you at your next meeting.
That's fine, I mean, should we approve the concept? I mean, because I don't know if people are going to care about the words necessarily, I don't know. It's just the idea of including it.
Sure, you could do it that way. You could ask staff to add some language to that effect to acknowledge the online participation and phone calls.
Okay, thanks Carrie. What do people think about that? Any, and if they, does anyone have any other thoughts about the minutes?
I really like the idea of adding that in because as I was reading through it, I was like, it clearly represents everyone who dialed in during the meeting. But there was, I mean, it's really hard to say right now, but probably two or three times the number of people that had online dialogue as well as voicemails and other submissions. And so I do think that it's going to be valuable for others to see that there was even wider community engagement than what people heard in the discussion. So I really like that idea, Ian.
Okay, any other thoughts?
Yeah, I do too. I think that's relevant, both, you know, the people who write in on Better Together Dyna as well as the call-ins during the meeting, but then also knowing who's viewing, I think that's interesting. Unless, I mean, there's a cost benefit, right? If it's a huge deal to calculate those numbers or get those numbers, then, you know, I don't know what the, but in general, you know, I think the more information like that is better.
Anybody else? Do we have, should people came making a motion for these, or do you want to wait to see the revised minutes next time? Either way?
There's no harm in waiting, let's just wait.
Okay, all right. Everyone else agree? Now hearing a clamor on this one. All right, well, then that takes us to our public hearings. Tonight, we have one matter, and that's a front yard setback variance to the front yard setback at 4248 Alden Drive. And I believe appearing for the staff tonight is Emily Bottiker, is that correct?
Yes.
Emily, have at it.
Thank you. All right. So the subject property, 4248 Alden Drive, is approximately 0.23 acres and is located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Alden Drive and Morningside Road. The existing home on the lot is a two-story home that was built in 1914. The applicant intends to tear down the existing structure and replace it with another two-story home. The lot is a 50-foot by 200-foot corner lot that requires two front yard setbacks. The required front yard setbacks are equal the existing front yard setbacks for the homes on either side, so the home to the west along Morningside Road and the home to the north along Alden Drive. The existing setback, the existing house on the lot is currently setback 10.2 feet on the south side of the lot. The proposed setback on the south side of the property for the new home is 11.2 feet. The Morningside Road setback is set by the property, or the home to the west. The home to the west is setback 29.8 feet from the south property line, which is why the applicant is seeking an 18.6-foot front yard setback variant. The applicant has provided, or the engineering department has provided, reviewed the application, has provided a memo that is included in your packet tonight. On the screen here is the proposed survey. The existing home on, the existing home on the subject property is oriented towards Alden Drive. The proposed home would be oriented off of Morningside Road. The proposed home, with the exception of the required front yard setback along Morningside Road, meets all of the setback, the zoning requirements. The lot has two required front yard setbacks which greatly affect the buildable area within the setbacks due to the narrow lot. The practical difficulty is caused by the location of the home to the west, which like I said, is setback 29.8 feet requiring this house, or this proposed, this is subject property, to have a 29.8-foot front yard setback requirement along Morningside Road. The, with the 29.8-foot setback to Morningside Road or the property line along Morningside Road and a five-foot setback to the north lot line, there's approximately a 15-foot wide buildable area for this lot. And staff believes there's no reasonable-sized home that could be built on the lot that meets all of the required setbacks. The proposed home would be setback further from Morningside Road than the current home exists. The width of the property and the limitations of the required setbacks are not common for every lot or every corner lot. And staff believes that granting the variants will not alter the character of the neighborhood. The proposed home, or the proposed project complies with all other zoning requirements. Tonight's staff's recommendation is to approve an 18.6-foot front yard setback variance to the required front yard setback along Morningside Road at 4248 Alden Drive, subject to the findings and conditions listed in the staff report. So this, like I said, the orientation of the home is switching from Alden Drive to Morningside Road. So this would be the view from Alden Drive, and this would be the view from Morningside Road. And with that, I can stand for any questions. The applicant, Kurt Brecky, is also on the line.
Hello, Commissioners, thank you very much for entertaining our hearing.
Kurt, Kurt, if you could just hold on one second, we'll get to you. Thank you very much. We definitely are going to want to talk to you, but first, we, the process, the general process is that the planning commission will ask staff if they have any questions. And once that done, then you'll have your opportunity to present and get questions. So does, does anyone have any questions for staff right now?
And I have a question for Emily.
Okay, Carrie.
Emily, can you hear me? Okay.
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay, so the proposed house meets the clearance requirements of, there's no variance for the, on the lot line to the north, correct?
Correct. There's a five-foot setback requirement to the lot line of the north.
Okay, and the, so the single property to the west, which is that 28 to 29 feet setback, is that the sole? I mean, it's not an average, because as you go further west on Morningside, there are homes that are really quite similar to what we're talking about now. But that one property kind of sets, sets that distance?
Yep, it's either that they mash the property directly, or directly adjacent, or they mesh, they meet the average of the block.
Okay, okay. But whereas, I mean, it was certainly my observation as you went west, that homes were considerably closer to Morningside than that 28 feet. So, okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have questions for Emily?
I have a question. So it does seem to me that this is a bit different from some of the other variances that we look at, similar situations, because most of the time we have more than one home, so the average is more relevant. And this home is sitting, this home that is being compared to, the neighbor home on the west, sits, it seems further than typical away from the street. Is, does it, or is that about typical?
It's hard to say in this area because there is only one property to the west that is oriented towards Morningside Road. So the, only the property directly adjacent to this property is oriented towards Morningside Road. So this is the only setback that they use to establish their required setback because the home further to the west is oriented off of Grimes.
Okay, but you're saying it doesn't, it's not particularly far back as far as we know? We're not worried about that?
Yeah, I think it depends on the neighborhood, but for a newly developed lot without an existing home, the required front yard setback is 30 feet.
30 feet. And this, this project is, is going to be setback further than the current home? Is that right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Emily, I have a question.
Okay.
I know that we aren't going to use the house on that same block that's facing Grimes in our analysis for what the average should be. But do you know what the side yard setback is off of Morningside for that house?
The existing, or what would be required?
The house, two, two houses to the west that's not facing Morningside.
I don't have that figure in front of me. If the house was to be built new, the required setback to the home is 15 feet, and it would be 20 feet to the garage. So I don't have the figure. I could probably pull up, if you want to ask the applicant questions, after you guys are done with the rest of your questions, I could get a measurement.
Thank you.
Any further for Emily?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
So that house, two houses to the west, is the address of that house Grimes? Is that why it's referred to as being?
Um.
Because it has a backyard facing Grimes. I mean, maybe that used to be the front of the house, but it's not the front of the house anymore.
Okay.
So the house faces Morningside and the driveway faces Morningside. And then what I guess would normally be considered the front yard is a fenced backyard.
Okay.
I'm a little confused why that house wasn't used as part of a...
The applicant could have used then, that if it is oriented towards Morningside Road, the applicant could have used that as an average. I would have to verify what that setback is to see if that matters. I think the variance would still come into play, some sort of variance.
Sure, sure, but it wouldn't be as big a variance, right?
Potentially, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Emily, this is Ian. There are a handful of houses in the neighborhood facing Morningside. Some addresses are not Morningside, you know, some are like, this house faces Morningside, but its address is Alden, that appear to be somewhat close to Morningside. And I have the following five addresses, and I think these are similar questions what people are asking. One is 4114 Morningside. I believe that's the house that's two to the west. 4249 Alden, I think that's just across the street, just across Alden fronting Morningside. 4300 Eaton, E T O N, which I think is a little bit further south. And 4301 Eaton, I think those on the other side of Morningside. And then 4248 Scott Terrace, which I believe is a little even further east, but about a block or two, maybe a block east, but still has a frontage on Morningside. Do you have information about, you know, how many feet away from Morningside those houses are setback?
I do have those here. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen here for a second. Hold on one moment. So in looking at 4114 Morningside Road, the house sits 16.1 feet away from the property line there. 4249 Alden, there was a, I took a rough measurement, it's roughly six feet. We didn't have not, we did not have a survey on file. The home at 4300 Eaton is 13 feet from the property line, and that was based on a survey that we did have on file. 4301 Eaton is roughly 22 feet. We didn't have a survey on file, so that was a measurement taken off of an aerial. And then 4248 Scott Terrace was roughly 13 feet. The, we did not have a survey on file that had that exact measure.
So that's really helpful. So could you go back to your screen and just show us? You said one was six feet. Could you show us that again, six feet from the property line?
That was the, 4249 Alden.
Yeah, could you, could you just go back and share and show us just for completeness sake of nothing else?
I'm gonna pull up on aerial with the addresses shown, so it's clear. All right. Sorry, I have to jump around here a little bit.
Doing really, you're doing great.
So I'm sorry, I, one more time, this, the property highlighted in red is the subject property. So which one were you asking? The one that was setback six feet? Which is 4249 Alden. So the home directly across the street from the subject property.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any further questions at this time. Does anyone else have questions for staff? With that, Mr. Brecky now would be, if you have a presentation, this would, this would be your opportunity.
I have no, my name is Kurt Brecky with C. Allen Homes, and I don't have a presentation. I think Emily's done a terrific job of discussing and describing what variance we're going for. And I just want to thank all of the commissioners to take some time to evaluate this. Thank you very much.
Okay, does anyone have questions for Mr. Brecky?
I do.
Okay.
So has any, was any thought given to having the driveway on the other side of the house where the existing house is?
It was considered, the reason that the, it's a pre-sold home, it's not a model home, it's a pre-sold home. The reason being is that if they were to have a back-loading garage, then they would have to walk past their garage to get to the backyard. And the way the house is laid out, they have like a three-season porch and then a nice little patio off the back of the house. So bringing the entrance off of Alden kind of solved that issue so that they didn't have to walk in front of their garage door to get back to a usable space in the backyard, the west of the house.
Do you have further? Anyone else have questions for Mr. Brecky? I have a question, and that is, as we were just discussing, other houses that are relatively close to Morningside. And obviously, that's a big piece of the public feedback we got too, is how close the house is to Morningside and how that affects the feel of the neighborhood. Some of the houses that are close, for example, 4114 Morningside, which is about a block west, has some trees between the house and Morningside. Could you discuss a little bit? I mean, I see in some of the drawings some trees, but what, what do you think you could grow? Or what are you planning to grow between the house and the, the street area to give people more of a sense of separation between the house and the, and the community in general?
Well, first of all, the existing house, I believe, is one foot closer to the street than our proposed home. So we're actually proposing our house to be further away from the street and the sidewalk. We haven't done a huge analysis with the landscape architect yet, but something like arborvitae that doesn't get too overly big, but still has a nice little barrier, kind of like a fence going along the sidewalk. I don't think the owner wants a huge hedge blocking their view of, of their house from the street so that they can sit in their great room, their living room, and still see the activity outside. But I think it would be plausible to do some short, sort of shorter hedge, or some sort of shorter arborvitae to kind of break up that space between the sidewalk and the house itself. But again, we are going to be one foot further back, I believe, further than the existing house is now. And the existing house just has one big tree next to the house right now. There is no, there is no hedge in front of the house. As you go further west, because the lot is very deep, 200 feet deep, there are some hedges and things like that blocking the backyard. But right now, the existing home doesn't have a hedge of any sort or a fence next to the sidewalk, just one large tree between the house and the sidewalk.
Thank you. Isn't one difference between this house and the existing house, the, the difference on the amount of frontage that will be within the setback, like the existing house is just a, perhaps 15 feet of frontage that's, that's closer to the street? With this one, it's going to be significantly more than that, isn't it?
That is correct. You are correct.
Okay.
There will be more house closer to the sidewalk. Not closer to the sidewalk, but there'll be more house than, than there is existing now.
Okay, thanks. Does anyone else have any further questions for the applicants? Well, with that said, this is a public hearing, and we have unique procedures for these online public hearings. And we're going to give it, we're going to give our audience a moment to dial in. Dial in by calling 1-800-374-0221, conference ID number 2591949. And you'll be given up to, you press one if you'd like to speak, it'll be given up to three minutes. We've received 12 comments by Better Together, and I believe two other comments by voicemail or email to staff. And we've, we've reviewed those comments. We ask if you do call in that, you know, that you, that you, if you've already commented by Better Together in another way, you don't need to call in. And if you do call in, we ask if you can not to duplicate other comments that we've received. We do pay attention to the comments you receive. With that, we'll just give a moment here, see if calls are loading.
Chair Nemirov, this is Communications Director Jennifer Bennerott. We do have a handful of people on the phone right now. No one has yet indicated they would like to speak. So again, I'd like to remind people that if you would like to testify, please press star one on your phone's keypad to let us know you'd like to give testimony. At that point, our operator, who's a lovely woman named Cindy, will put you in the queue. And we would ask that you start by beginning your remarks with your full name and address, including apartment, condo, or business suite number if you are representing a business. So again, please press star one if you'd like to speak.
Keep another moment.
Your first question comes from the line of Frank Wasner of 4246 Alden. Your line is now open.
Hello, this is Frank Wasner. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, we can.
I live immediately adjacent to the property in discussion. My major comment is, concerns the routing of the proposed driveway off of Alden Drive into the property. And I was wondering if that could not be routed out, not to Alden, but to, excuse me, the other street.
To Morningside?
Morningside, excuse me, yes. So it would, instead of, the idea is to conserve some green space. The driveway has to get to a road somehow. Question is, can it bend there, or shall, shall it go to Alden or to Morningside? And one proposal I would have is that it go to Morningside. The second question, if I may?
Yes.
The size of the structure seems significantly large. I can't give you any specifics from the sketch. I see it pretty fit, pretty much uses the bulk of the 50-foot lot line size. And the length doesn't concern me so much as the width and the overall bulk of the house. I've looked at the side views of it. I don't think it looks like anything in the neighborhood. That probably was never the intention, but it is, doesn't tie into the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Wasner. Do you have anything else?
I guess the last comment would be on the size of the house. It seems extraordinarily large.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wasner, Mr. Brecky, and all other Collins, one thing I'll mention also is, thank you for your participation. What we'll do is we'll take all the comments and then we'll try to collect them at the end. But right now, we'll just let, we'll just let people speak. And Mr. Brecky will have an opportunity to answer any questions or issues that are raised at the conclusion of the public comments. So Jennifer, do we have anyone else wanting to dial or wanting to speak?
Yes, sir. Cindy, will you please introduce Mr. Andy Warner?
Mr. Andy Warner of 4107 Morningside. Your line is now open. Mr. Andy Warner of 4107 Morningside. Your line is now open.
Hey, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, excellent. Great. Well, I also submitted some points which you said you've received, uh, so I'll take those as read. When I saw that the, uh, there was a resubmission with a change of the facade of the house, I was actually quite disappointed that the resubmission doesn't appear to address any of the community concerns at all. It seems to address construction details, so that's moot. I'd also like to present some additional data supporting my assertion in the, uh, in my written previous submissions that while a 50-by-200 corner lot with a deep setback set from the house to the west may constitute a challenge, I don't think this structure is an appropriate response. And I took the time to measure the setback of pretty much every structure on Morningside between France and Wooddale. There are currently only two structures anywhere near as close to the street. So I think it's important to understand that property line isn't always the same distance from the street. I think that's true. People may take issue with that. But for instance, 4249 Alden has supposedly a six-foot setback from the property line, but it's certainly not six foot from the seat, from the street, or seven foot from the street. It's something like nine, you know, 16, 18 feet from the street. So that's what you experience. I believe the plot line is awfully close to the sidewalk in this particular, uh, the, the property line is awfully close to the sidewalk. At least from the survey state, it appears that way. So we're not comparing apples with apples here. There are only two structures anywhere near as close to the street as requested by this variance. One is the part of the existing structure, as mentioned before, that people keep claiming, oh, the new house is further back from that. But I, you know, there's 15 feet of this, and thank you for the commission member that pointed that out. There's 15 feet of this, which is something like 7% of the lot length. And the proposed structure takes up 42%, so the, the visual effect is, is, can't even be compared. The other structure is the garage at 4400 Morningside, which is a single-story, street-level, and was built in 1918. So I don't see there are any other significant setback ordinance violations anywhere on the street, including new construction and multiple corner lots. So I think effectively here, we're asking for a double variance. You're asking for a variance based on, uh, not the, the average, which is wrong because as people point out, the, uh, the house on the corner of Grimes does actually face onto Morningside. So that should have been used to set the average. And they want a variance from the 15-foot. You could, you could ask for a variance from that setback and go to the standard 15-foot setback. But no, had to ask for more.
Miss, Mr. Warner, uh, you, you've used your three minutes. Do you have anyone, do you have a final comment or? Thank you for your input that you provided. Do you have, do you have anything final?
Yeah, I just think that if you grant this variance, it would be cited as a justification for future variances. So it's not just about this one structure. Undefended variances, ordinance has become irrelevant.
Thank you. Thank you. Jennifer, do we have other comments?
We do have one more person on the line, but he has not indicated that he would like to speak. Again, anyone who would like to speak, please be sure to press star 1 so that we know you are ready and we can introduce you. To anyone else watching the meeting at home, please feel free to call in now. That number again is 1-800-374-0221. You'll need conference ID 2591949. Once you've connected, please press star 1 to let us know you'd like to speak. We do now have that last caller ready to speak. Cindy, would you go ahead and please introduce Mr. Scott Nelson?
Mr. Scott Nelson of 4244 Alden Drive. Your line is now open.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. Just three quick comments. I don't have a tremendous problem with the setback on Morningside, provided the setback on Alden would be maintained. That's kind of a big deal, and it doesn't seem to be a major issue. But secondarily, I do think it would make more sense, Mr. Wasner, I also agree with him, that the green space should be maintained between his house, because he's the next property to the north. He's got a tremendously large silver maple that I think runs across the property line of both of those. And if a driveway was going to be put in, I think it's probably got a four-foot diameter or something like that. I don't see how that, that tree would survive because the root system would be going underneath the excavated driveway to the lot to the north. So I think that's kind of a big issue for that big, mature, old tree. And I know we've talked about trees getting cut down on some of these projects. And then my final comment is, it's a very big lot. It's a very big building for that lot. And I know we, we seem to have a, we were a little delayed in the neighborhood. I know we're all very active, but some of these things change and they happen very rapidly. And it seems like they're overbuilding these lots quite a bit. And I know that's the economic realities of a builder, you know, trying to package a house to maximize their revenue. But we're sort of stuck with these big mansions in our, you know, beautiful little neighborhood of smaller homes. We, we ourselves did a rebuild of a 1915 home, and we're able to make it narrow as it went back and follow all the codes and didn't have any problems. And looking at it from the street, you can't tell that it's not a 1915, but it's a completely modern home. So that's, that's really all my comment, except for possibly, if you look at the next houses up to the north, the next four lots, one of those is mine, we all have detached garages that are towards the back of the lot. So that gives you some green space between your home and your garage. And maybe that's not ideal for everyone, but it does provide a little bit more space and a little more breathing room, and it's more in keeping with the style of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Jennifer, do we have anyone else?
We did have someone else join the call, but she has not yet indicated that she'd like to speak. Please make sure to press star 1 when you are ready to speak.
We'll just wait one moment.
All right, she has indicated she'd like to speak. Cindy, would you please introduce Nicole Williams?
That's Nicole Williams of 3915 Morningside. Your line is now open.
Hello? Hi.
We can hear you.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you so much for taking my call. I've just been listening to the other comments, and just not to repeat too much of anything, I agree with what they're saying. We actually lived next door to a C. Allen Homes project for a couple of years. And unfortunately, we sustained significant damage, so much so that we had to hire a structural engineer. We had to hire an attorney. We did end up settling, but we were still out well over $30,000 for damage to our driveway that was replaced. All the specko on our garage and our house that was cracked beyond repair and had to be replaced. And the west side of our garage had to have a helical pier system installed because it had started to sink during the excavation process, and they did not shore it up properly, certainly not in time. I bring all of this up because this was all within the scope of following and passing inspections. They did not have a variance. This was just, you know, a pretty standard vanilla putting up a new house. And this was the kind of damage that we sustained. So the idea of granting a variance, um, you know, it's just hard to imagine that. I, we've said many times, we wouldn't wish our experience on anyone. We pretty much had to incur all of this time and monetary damage just for simply staying in our house. So, you know, I think there's certainly ways to build houses in Morningside, but you do have to be really respectful to the narrow lot, you know, just that lots are very narrow. And if you have a builder that knows what they're doing and has respect for the neighbors and the neighboring property, it's usually not an issue. But, you know, this, this is not our experience, and I, I just can't imagine giving them any more leeway. But I appreciate the time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jennifer, do we have anyone else wishing to contribute?
We don't have anyone else on the line at this time who hasn't spoken. You might want to wait just another minute or so in case we have any other callers who would like to testify tonight. Just a reminder, the number to call in is 1-800-374-0221. You must reference conference ID number 2591949. And once you've joined the call, please press star 1 to let us know you'd like to speak.
Thank you. Keep waiting for it to rain. Jennifer?
I think it's okay for you to move on now.
Thank you. All right. Is everyone ready to, you have a resolution to close community, the public comment portion? Anything to answer there? Jerry?
Yeah, I moved to close the public comment.
For a second.
Got motion?
Motion, a second. Liz, could you do a roll vote, please?
Thank you. Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson?
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Chair Nemiroff?
Aye. Thank you, Liz. So that, next section, well, I'd like to just follow up on a couple of, before we have a public, this is me, Planning Commission comment, I'd like to just follow up on some of the comments that were made during our public comments section. If other members of the commission have follow-on questions, I'd like to ask the staff or the applicant, please let us know. But I, Emily, I had a couple of questions for staff coming out of that. One is, we got one comment that our measurements were not apples-to-apples, that one, that we were measuring this project is 11 feet to the street and another project as a certain number of feet, or another property, there's a certain number of feet to the property line. Could you address that?
Yep, yes, I can. Um, right-of-way widths might differ depending on where they, where the subject properties are along Morningside Road. I can show you the aerial that I was showing you earlier, that kind of, the aerial might shift because we're, like I said, we're using an aerial and the property lines are overlaid. So it's not 100% precise, but the surveys that the applicant provides are. But the aerial here will give you an idea. I believe what the caller was talking about is the property line might not be directly adjacent to the sidewalk. And so as you can see on the subject property, the property line is not directly adjacent to the sidewalk. So the setbacks are measured from the property line. So in this case, it's not from the sidewalk that the setback would be measured from, it'd be from the property line.
And so when you're saying, Emily, that the setback variance, they're requesting 11-foot, you know, 11-foot setback, is that from the property line on this project also?
Yep, it's from the property line.
Okay, so then it, so then it is apples-to-apples. Your measurements for this are from the property line, and your measurements for the others are for the property line also?
Correct. You can see on the proposed survey, it's a little difficult to see in black and white here, but the property line, if you can see my mouse, is this solid black line.
Oh, wait, for some reason.
It's gray now, right now, we can't see.
Yeah, yeah, for some reason.
Sharing again here. I'll stop and then try again.
We could, we saw it just 20 seconds ago.
How about now?
Yes.
Okay. So on the proposed survey, you can see here that, here is the sidewalk, if you can see my mouse. The solid black line would be the property line, and that's where the setbacks are measured from.
Okay. Thank you.
I have just one quick follow-on question to that.
Okay, great.
On, so Emily, are, I understand the caller to, in proximity to Morningside, are all of the property lines the same distance from the street? Or are they kind of jagged depending on which property? They most likely would not be consistent. They might be similar. I can show you that aerial again that might give you an idea. So you can see, it is pretty consistent in this area on Morningside Road, if you guys can see it, that the property lines are not directly adjacent to the sidewalk, at least in this block of Morningside Road. And you can see to the property to the south, they are closer to the sidewalk, the property lines. But on the north side of the block, the property line seemed to be not, not directly adjacent to the sidewalk. Okay, thank you for going into that detail because that's kind of where I understood maybe the discrepancy to be was the, the distance from the street. But it does look like the property line for the north side of Morningside seems to be pretty steady across this entire view. So thank you.
Thank you. Emily, I had a question about another comment that was raised. And I don't know if you're the right person to comment, but I'll ask, and this is kind of a staff comment, perhaps we'll ask the applicant too. Somebody, somebody mentioned, and I think we got this on an online, it's one of the mentions tonight, you know, in our public section, and I think we also got this online, is that there was damage in another project that went on. What, and that happened without a variance. So what, what kind of management do you know occurs with these variances? We're always learning, and I know there were damages that happened with a teardown, for example, that was fairly well-known several years ago, that the city has now implemented a lot of procedures to prevent that type of damage from occurring to neighbors. Do you know how, if the city has procedures or processes to protect, trying to find another, a couple of letters to start my words with, to protect against damage for teardowns that get variances?
Not directly to teardowns necessarily that require variances, but there is a residential redevelopment coordinator, Addison Lewis, and he works in the building department. So there is certain inspections and reviews that he does and he's involved in. I don't know, Carrie, if you can speak more specifically to that, to Addison's position. But there is a residential redevelopment coordinator that helps kind of facilitate the teardown process in the neighborhood.
Right. See, so there's, there's the, the neighborhood meeting when there's a teardown rebuild. And yeah, so he performs inspections during construction. But it's up to our building inspectors, they're doing periodic inspections throughout the life of a construction project, ensuring there's adequate silt fronts, property line protections, things like that. So there's check-ins all along through the, through the building process.
Carrie, I, I, I believe that I'm in my either fifth or sixth year on the Planning Commission, and it seems to me that my, my observation is that those check-ins and monitorings have changed a lot over the last five or six years. Can you discuss that a little bit? I mean, it seems like it's a lot, lot more, the city's a lot more careful and, and on it, for, for example, or, or than, than it may have been in the past. That's probably not the right phrase, but you know what I mean? This, the city's, you, I think like even several years ago, this position didn't even exist, for example. But I think there's a lot, a lot more buildup institutional knowledge and procedure. Could you discuss that? Am I correct in my assumptions?
Yeah, that, yeah, that is correct. So he's kind of the, the point person for if there's any issues, residents can call him, and he can coordinate with appropriate staff to take a look at issues. There's a lot more review in terms of grading drainage and check-ins with our engineering department. They're much more involved than they were, say, five, 10 years ago. So yeah, there's been a lot of upgrade to our processes over the years.
Thanks, Carrie. Does anyone else in the Planning Commission have questions for staff following the public comment? Those, I'll, I'll bring Mr. Brecky back on. Do.
I, I have a question. So I realize what we're asked to address here is the variance for the front. But I'm, I'm a little bit surprised when I think about it that, that someone can create a driveway on a street where the house itself is not facing the street. So when you're going down the street, it almost looks like that's the back of the house, where every other house is the front of the house. And, um, I guess I'm just surprised that, that that doesn't require a variance to have a new curb cut. And and why is that not the case? So that might be a question for Carrie actually is. I mean, I'm thinking with a lot of these developments, we talk about the new curb cuts. And, and why in a residential street where the house is facing the front? You know, you see houses and not driveways so much, or garages. Why, why is a curb cut not an issue?
Yeah, so we don't have a setback or driveways. We, they do need a curb cut permit in order to put them in, so our engineering department is looking at them. They, they don't want to see them close to intersections. That might be why it's shifted as far north as it is. But on a corner lot, you could have a curb cut on each right of way.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Barubi. Does anyone else have any questions for staff?
Do.
Mr. Brecky, if we, if we, if we could start with that question previously. You know, so there was comments about damage, I'm sorry?
I am, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, yeah, I, I had a question, yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Lou.
No problem.
Please.
Sure, thank you. So we approved a, I live in this neighborhood, and so this house is, is a couple of blocks from where I live. And on the other side of Grimes, on, on Crocker, we recently approved, just last year, I believe, a house teardown at 4249 Crocker, which I think was substantially similar in that it faced Crocker, although it was on the east side of Crocker, and it was the last house on the lot, and they needed a variance because for the, basically the same reason, the you know, the buildable space was tiny for that lot. So is, do we know, is this about the same size as that other house? Because I know that house had a three-car garage. Do you have any idea of how big that house was or how close it was to Morningside compared to this house?
I don't have the information on the size of that house in front of me. That's something I could look into if needed.
Okay. I mean, I, I think it's substantially similar to this one. I don't know how much closer or further away. The difference, you know, just from living in the area, knowing the area, is that this particular house is on a hill. Not a huge hill, but it, it is on an elevated piece of property, whereas the other one's very flat. Anyway, okay, thank you.
I seem to recall that one as well. It, this does seem extremely similar. I don't know the exact size location, but these corner lots are always difficult. It's really, you, you can't put a single-family home on the lot that meets all of our setback. So it really comes down to what's a reasonably sized home for this corner lot compared to the neighborhood. And it, it meets our, you know, it meets our building coverage requirements and setbacks in other directions. So it's, corner lots are difficult.
Thanks. It appears that one was almost, it was April 10th, 2019, if I'm looking at records. Okay, Mr., any further questions for staff? Mr. Brecky, yeah, we'll bring you back in.
Yes.
Thank you for, thank you for waiting with us.
My battery's going down, so the camera shut off, but I, I can hear everyone.
Okay, and we see a C for you, so we know it's you. When we see the C move, we'll know it's you. One, one, one resident commented on damage from a, another development. I'd just give you an opportunity to respond to that, if you have things to protect that in this case, for example.
Well, in the case of this, the house on Alden, that we'll be shoring, you know, between the two properties, the property of the north and our property, of course. And, you know, extra protection will be taken, because somebody mentioned that large tree. I know there's a five-foot setback, but, you know, we try to take our way as possible from that lot line and have it heavily shored, which is actually engineered, it's not just something we throw on the ground, the shoring is actually engineered, has to be approved and designed by an engineer, and then through the permitting process that is checked through your building department.
I'm, I'm actually sorry, I don't know if I heard everything you said. Did everyone else catch the, yeah, I, I think you were talking about the tree also, which is great. Would it be possible for you to say it again? Otherwise, if your power's down, maybe, maybe just take a moment, let you call in, if that's possible?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll speak again. Regarding preserving, you know, any houses next to any house that we build, we will have shoring, which is, has to be engineered by a structural engineer, designed, engineered, approved, has to be inspected again then by the engineer, once the shoring is in place, has to be approved by your building department. So there are a lot of very important things that we need to do to maintain any structures around ours, safe manner.
And especially the general comment, I mean, would you like to, I might have a follow-up I'm thinking about, but the, but the, the tree itself, somebody mentioned concerned about a neighbor possibly losing a tree with this project. I mean, is that, do you think that tree's gonna get damaged, or do you think that tree will make it?
To tell you the truth, I do not know how far off the lot line that tree is. So I, I do not have a good comment on that.
Okay. All right. Let's see, people.
Definitely never want to intend to damage any trees, no.
Okay. A lot of comments were made about the driveway. Would you like to comment about the driveway? We got a lot of people, there was feedback from the city, I mean, from residents and planning commissioners, about the placement of the driveway. Would you like to comment on that?
Yes, if the driveway was on the west side of the house, the owner would have to walk past their garage to get out into the backyard. Another thing is that it's a steeper hill from Morningside to the property, where the, where the garage is gonna be. So a person would have to actually enter further west to have a gradual incline through a very long driveway, taking up any kind of green space that the home, the homeowners and their children might, might enjoy. So the reasoning is, because of steepness of that hill, and then also they couldn't just, well, right now, the house is designed, they have a three-season porch, and then a nice little outdoor patio that's viewed from the great room, walking through some beautiful patio doors into their green space. If we had the garage on the west side of the house, they'd have to actually, they wouldn't be able to see the backyard. If the kids are playing in the backyard, they'd have to sit out there at all times, wouldn't be able to see the children through their windows. They'd have to walk in front of a, you know, a 16-foot garage door and, you know, turn the corner to finally get to their backyard. So that's the, that's the main reason why we want to enter off of Alden.
Okay. And then just, thank you. And then there was just comments, perhaps it may be a you know, people commented about the size. And and whether the, well, the size, how, how do, how do you see the sizes, how's comparing to the neighborhood houses?
Well, the house that we built on the block, 4001 Morningside, that footprint, I believe, was almost 1,300 square feet. And that was a 50-foot by 176-foot lot. This house has a, let's see, it has a 1,400-square-foot footprint. So not much bigger. The lot is longer, it's the same width. So it's, I think it's within the parameters of other things we've done in Morningside and other houses that I've seen built on morning, or in the Morningside neighborhood.
Okay, thanks. Does anyone else have any further questions for the applicant?
I, I have a question. A follow-up to the size. So there's been some comment that it would be possible to build a house on this lot that would be small enough that you wouldn't need a variance. And, and that on other similarly sized lots that has been done. So can you give us your opinion on that and your thoughts?
Well, the existing lot, to stay in compliance, we'd have to be, you know, the same setback as the house to the north and the same setback to the house of the west. If we maintained and tried to comply with that, our home could only be 15 feet wide.
I have a visual that might help, if you guys would like to see it, that I showed at my presentation. So this is something that I just put together. But the red square would be the buildable area that meets all of the city's required setbacks. So it shows the required setback off of Alden, the required setback off of Morningside Road. The property line to the west would be considered the rear yard setback, which is a 25-foot requirement, and then a five-foot setback requirement to the north.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Any, any further questions for the applicant?
This is, this is Commissioner Agnew. I, I think this is out of order, but this is probably then a question for staff. Who is it that I understand the different ways that we can figure out what the setback is, of like, looking to the house directly or taking the average. And I think that we've had some conversation back and forth about how this was done for this. Is it the applicant who decides what it's comparing the, the property to, or is it the city that is determining what that requirement is for this property in itself?
It would be matching the, the adjacent property or the average of the block. And so in this case, the surveyor measured the distance between, for the property line, or for the property to the west. So that 29.8 feet was measured by the surveyor.
Okay, because it appears if we would have done the average, we would have then included the house one more to the west as well, and that house seems closer to Morningside, and the variance would not be as large if that were the case, correct?
Potentially, yes. I don't know the distance, but yes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Does anyone else, thank you, Commissioner Agnew. So this is the opportunity for the planning commission to make comments as well as questions. Does anyone wish to kick off any comments? Commissioner Strauss?
Yes, I, that last view from, from Emily, I think, I mean, it occurred to me when, was first in a presentation when I saw it, but I think that's pretty persuasive that there are the difficulties, and I think this project, you know, has addressed a reasonable solution. I, I think you would have not ended up with something very aesthetic building within that, you know, narrow little rectangle of, you know, meeting all variances. And the other one, I think Carrie's comments just recent, I mean, is the staff report, but then his verbal comments just a few minutes ago was a great summary of, of the whole situation, that, that this is the most important, I think, setback is to the, probably to the north and location of the driveway. And it would appear to me that in from Alden, traffic-wise, is a much more desirable and, you know, access point to the property than Morningside. I mean, those two streets, those streets feel very differently, you know, how traffic moves on it. So I, I like the Alden driveway, and the builder's comments about, you know, how he designed it makes sense to me too. So yeah, thank you, staff. I thought you did a very nice job in presenting the situation. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any comments or further questions? Anyone like to make a, you know, make, you can also make a motion too, if people are ready to do that.
I, I want to speak, but Carrie looks like he wants to speak. I'm not sure what's going on. Was Carrie just waving?
Lou, I argue. I did. It's kind of a, for what it's worth, to build off Commissioner Agnew's comments. So I just took a measurement off the aerial map of that home, two houses to the west. It looks like they have about a 10-foot setback. So if you took the average of the 29.8 and the 10-foot setback, the required setback would be 19.9 feet, still need a variance. But that would be the required setback as opposed to the 29.8 setback that is currently shown as the requirement.
Lou, now, do you want to go now?
Sure. So to me, I see two issues here, and actually, the, the setback, I mean, clearly from looking at other houses in the same position, on the, on the same street, on Morningside, which includes the house across the street from this one, across Alden from this one, as well as two blocks west, the house that we approved last year, that, you know, these, these houses typically are closer to the, to the property line than the house immediately to the west, which actually is also a fairly new house. So the, the closest to the street, and houses in a dinah are generally getting much bigger than they used to be, but it seems to meet, you know, height standards and all that sort of thing. So my other concern, so I'm really not too worried about how close the house is. I think there's certainly precedent for other houses, and just, you know, physics, you need to have the house closer to Morningside. However, there's just this huge compromise, as, as Commissioner Barubi said, and, and one of the, at least one of the callers said, and some of the people mentioned in the online comments, that the, the complete width of the built property and a driveway facing Alden, I think is a terrible idea. I think if you look at the property across the street on Alden, their driveway is behind the house and it faces Morningside. If you look at the house, two houses to the west, which is the one on Grimes, they, their backyard faces Grimes. They switched sort of the orientation of the house so that the backyard faces Grimes and the driveway faces Morningside. And the same thing for the house that, that we approved last April, the driveway faces Morningside. So this seems like a you know, something that just doesn't really, it feels like a house from an excerpt. It doesn't feel like a house that fits certainly into a dinah or certainly into Morningside. You know, I, I, I kind of balk at the phrase, you know, character of the neighborhood, but this one certainly doesn't. And actually, when the, when the developer mentioned that he did the house of 4001 Morningside, that's probably the worst example in the neighborhood, what's called a snout house, where the, the garage is the most prominent part of the house. And you're basically doing the same thing here, except you're splitting it sideways to the side street. So so I would not vote in favor of this, simply because the orientation of the garage. If the garage were on the west side of the house and it faced Morningside, it could either be built into the hill and the house on top of it, or you can have side access. Either one of those would be far preferable to what we have here. Thank you.
Does anyone else have comments? Motions? Christian Agnew?
Yes, so initially, I it felt like this very, like that no matter what, we would have to approve a variance for this lot. Based off of the idea that the buildable area is so small. But I am concerned that even just in a little bit of, you know, probing or diving into that, there could have been different ways that we were determining what the setbacks were. And increasing the available size for the house by an additional 10
increasing the available size for the house by an additional 10 feet no longer makes me as convinced that no matter what for a house to be built here, a variance would be required. And I I heard too, you know, kind of similar, I think, to the comment that we just heard that this house doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood. And I don't personally live in the neighborhood, but I did drive by and and saw many larger homes of varying styles of architecture. And so I I don't agree that it wouldn't fit the character. But I do think that I think the the concerns of the trees and what might be lost on this lot, as well as the concerns of the driveway orientation are valid concerns. So at this point, I don't. I don't think it is as simple as I initially assumed it would be. Thank you.
Anyone else? Joanne, looks like you were making motions. Hi, hi, Joanne. Anyone else wish to comment or motion?
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, sorry. It's always trying to find the unmute button.
I know.
So I agree I with what Commissioner Andrew just said, Agnew, sorry. I think that the house is very large for the footprint. I agree, you know, if it's only a 50 foot wide, you know, building pad, you know, you have to provide a variance, but I'm really struggling with the size of the home and the orientation of the driveway on Alden. Again, just I'm looking at Google Maps right now and it is, I mean, Alden is just all the garages in the back and I don't know. So I'm struggling. I I was in favor and now I'm thinking I might not support this one. Thank you. I have.
Commissioner Olson, Sheila, is that you?
Yeah, thanks. This is Sheila. I have sort of a question that I'm pondering, more of a procedural question. So before us is a question about the variance. I don't like the garage going out to facing out to Alden. I think that looks really odd. I think I'm really surprised we didn't hear more about that from the neighbors. Because from my perspective, that's actually the bigger issue. But when we when we look at this, my understanding is the question is the variance in front of us. And so we're either approving or not approving the variance. What we think of the garage facing Alden is not the issue. So would we have? I don't know if the word is authority, because I don't know how much authority we actually have, but would it be out of line to approve or not approve something that's not really in front of us?
Kerry has a fight for you.
Yep. So I I think you have a couple of options here. If you're leaning toward a denial, you need to state the reasons for the denial. And I've just jotted down a few from what I've heard. Think you believe that the building is too large for the lot, the driveway orientation and the loss of trees. So there's an example of three findings that you could make to deny the variance. So I I believe you can use the driveway orientation in your findings for a denial. That's the way, you know, if you'd like the applicant to redesign. I think we're still well within the 60 day window. If he wants to try to redesign and come back, that's a question you could pose to the applicant. Because if you were to approve a variance based on reorientation of driveway or a reduced setback, it's really a we're now into a redesign of the house. So it's it's really, I think it's those two options. Allowing the applicant to come back with a new plan or head toward a denial.
Thank you, Kerry. I I would propose that the the architect come back with a revised plan because I I think the house seems large for the lot. It doesn't seem reasonable to expect someone to design, build and live in a house that's 15 feet wide. But there must be something between 15 feet and what we're being asked to approve. And so somewhere in between, you can have a great looking house that accommodates the owner's desire to be able to access the backyard without having the garage facing Alden. I don't think I'm not an architect. I think it can be done. And I would I would propose it's worth saying, go back to the drawing board and come back with something that fits better on the lot and fits better on Alden.
So the options for the applicant would be, you know, he can accept that and come back, or he could ask the commission to take a vote. You know that this is the house that they're wanting. And they could call the question.
That and that seems fair because there's a cost to that. There's a time factor to that and if they want it, then it would it would go to the city council and the city council would decide. Is that correct?
So your decision is final. That being said, if you deny, the applicant has the opportunity to appeal that decision to the city council. Or on the flip side, if you were to approve this, a resident, if they they can appeal that decision.
And if if we if we deny it, they can always come back with another plan anyway.
Well, it would have to be. I believe the code reads something like it. You have to wait a year unless you have a substantially different plan.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Agnew, did you have something?
Yeah, and this is kind of back to Sheila's point. I do, I hear from the other commissioners that this feels like a a large home. But it's within the property coverage requirement. So I think that that's it requires 25% or less of the coverage area of the lot. And this is coming in it under that, I think it's pretty close, but it's under that. And so I don't know that that is going to impact my decision. I I agree that I hear that it's large. But it's still within the guidelines that are set by the city.
Todd, Commissioner Olson, did you have anything? You have referred from everyone else except you and me.
Oh, put me on the spot. Yeah, I I mean.
Get used to it.
I think the challenge with this is that garage. You know, it is no matter if it's a 20, if it's a 15 foot wide buildable pad or 25 foot buildable pad, you know, to build a a house, you know, you have a certain amount of square footage, you've got a narrow building space, so you're going to be long. So any house you put on that lot is going to be look long, it's going to look massed. It's going to have that issue. I don't think there's any way you can say it's too big because there's just no depth. Right? You can barely put a garage. I mean, 15 feet, you can't even have a garage facing out. You know, and at 20 feet, you can get you can have a garage, you probably can't get out of your car. So I think, you know, you're going to have to have a long house along on Morningside to build any reasonable sized house. But I I do take issue with with the location of the garage. You know, I think that does really change the character. It's a really suburban house in a eclectic neighborhood, but you know, there has to be a better way. And, you know, I don't I don't like see I wouldn't like there's there's an appeal to not having the garage on Morningside, which is the front you see. And I I do like garages that are turned away from the front of the house, but unfortunately, it's turned to another street. So that's, you know, you don't you you do see the snout. So. You know, I I just, I think for me, this is the struggle and I'm usually probably one of the more willing people to to look at this, the difficulty of these lots and and say, oh, variance is reasonable. I just don't think that putting a the garage where it is 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 the right solution. So I mean, I would I would not support a variance based on just the garage location alone.
And and my thoughts, I mean, I've been very informed by everyone else's comments. I'm a little less concerned about the garage. Although I do, I do recognize everyone's comments about how that changes the character of all the other houses on the street because of the design of the house being the garage being a prominent feature of that of that facade versus everyone else has their normal front doors and front yards. I I probably okay with that. I I think Commissioner Thorson's comment about this is just a certain amount of width of the house that you're going to have to have to fit the garage. I understand that. I'm probably, but in in general, I'm probably a little less concerned with the garage than I am with the size of the house, the size of the the mass that's within the setback that's that close to the street. I think it'll be like you could even see it in the the, I think the applicant's drawing. I mean, the it's so it's so close and so large, it'll be shading the sidewalk. At least in the drawing, although I I suspect it because of the way of the way where the sun is, it probably won't be shading it, but it's 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 just me so much so close to the sidewalk, I feel like it changes, it'll change the character of Morningside. I wish that the house were four feet further or farther away from the sidewalk, I think would make it a much easier approval for me. So. You know, that's 15 feet versus 11. I don't know if there's a way to do it. I don't know. May maybe it's an opportunity for Mr. Brecky to comment about what you'd like to do next. If you'd like to take these comments and and meet with your your client or would you like us to vote either, you know, approval or disapproval or? What what would you like to see us do now?
I appreciate the opportunity to talk. And what you were just talking about. What's that magic number like Commissioner Sheila, she mentioned, you know, the the house being too close to the property and not being 15 feet wide. What is that? What is the magical number? You were saying if it was 11 feet away from the lot line, we move it back four feet. How is that affecting? You know, is that the magical number? I I I don't see the my client wanting to go back to the drawing board, draw something, survey it, go through this procedure again, and then we come back with comments of I don't like the way it looks. What, you know, we have a lot of people in the room. If we come up with another new proposal, I don't like the way it looks. I think okay, now it's a little bit better, but it's still a bit too close to the sidewalk. I I would like to get some thoughts about your your thought process so we don't go through everything again. And I don't want to go through everything again, believe me. And we don't want to come back and like, ah, you kind of got it, but we don't like that because I don't like the way, you know, the roof looks. Comments like that, even though we are within the city standards. Everything we've done, we're within the guidelines. As far as the the footprint, we're within the 25%. I know we're asking to make it wider because 15 foot house isn't doable. I believe this house is 30 feet wide. That's that's not a very quiet house either. You start skinning it up to 26 feet, 25 feet, and now you've just got a longer shotgun house. Now it's going to protrude further back into the backyard versus trying to compact it as is now. So I guess I'm not sure where you want me to go or what you want me to say, what there's so many variables that are we following that? Yes, this house is within the city guidelines. They've met all our criteria. The height of the house fits our criteria. The footprint fits our criteria. So I I I guess I need some feedback as to what you're thinking the magical numbers are and the magical look of the house. One commissioner had a great comment that Alden is a very safe street, or I'd say a much safer street than Morningside. Morningside, there's no speed limit. I've worked on there many times and you see people driving 40, 45 miles an hour. You know, children exiting their driveways on the Morningside is very dangerous. I I've seen it many times when the school buses unload, people are driving too fast. That's a huge concern with the with the my client because they have children. It would not having the driveway off Alden, now you're ruining the whole green space in the back. You have no green space. It's all going to become driveway. You have to walk past your driveway or past your garage, past your driveway to try to get the green space. Back from the Alden lot line. So there's a lot of variables I see on this property that I need guidance. I I we can't just slip the coin each time we want to do something. When I first met with the city and Emily's put together a terrific package and it was presented very well. And we did everything that the city asked of us. And when we put this together, so I guess I'm looking for some guidance and some thoughts from the commissioners.
I think that's a very fair question. It 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 I think that's from from your perspective in particular, that's a very fair question. I think it's a hard question because essentially what would you approve? Or what more direct feedback can you give? Kerry, can I just toss over to you? I mean, what are what is our scope? It's almost like a sketch plan kind of question.
Yeah.
Yeah. So yeah, so I'm I'm hearing I'm hearing kind of mixed from the commission in terms of the size of the house. But I'm hearing you're you seem to all be in favor of turning the garage toward Morningside. So maybe that's it's as simple as that. If the applicant could turn the garage so it comes off of Morningside, is that what the commission is looking for?
Or another way to ask it, I mean, what are the changes that would get up to this design that would get approval? Is 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 that the change that would get a majority approval? I mean, for like for me, and I know for at least one other commissioner, the the entrance on Alden isn't as big a deal as this as the frontage on Morningside. I I understand the reasoning that Mr. Becky gave for Alden for the garage and and that follows what Commissioner, similar to what Commissioner Strauss said about Morningside, too. I don't know. Can we can we go into this level of discussion? Is what would what would it work? What would work for people? Kerry?
I I don't think you can guarantee the applicant that you would approve if he turns the garage. You're providing feedback as to what you what you might approve.
And I agree. I agree with you, Kerry. I think the most feedback had to do with the placement of the garage. I don't know. Is that? What do other people think? I mean, is that that what are the issues that would cause approval? That would help approval and not guaranteeing approval, but.
You know, I I completely appreciate the applicant's perspective that you know, the feed, if if we're going to proceed like this, he deserves some feedback. I'm struggling a little bit because I don't think it's our position to provide comments on aesthetics. And I and I I don't want to be saying, you know, I don't like the house, therefore it doesn't pass. I don't think we should ever be in that kind of position. For me, I actually like side loading garages personally, much better than in the front. However, given the aesthetics for the rest of the block of Alden, the front load garage onto Morningside makes more sense to me. It seems to me that the house is still really close to the front. But I appreciate what the applicant is saying regarding, you know, maybe it's not, you know, certainly not realistic to have a 15 foot wide house. And as I think about it, even as he mentioned, a 30 foot wide house is not ostentatious. And when it's spread out, it's 30 feet wide and it's spread out, the length, it's going to look bigger than it actually is. So I think he makes a really good argument that the house itself isn't necessarily that big. By the nature of the lot, it's going to be pushed forward unless he's going to ask for a variance in the back, in which case we probably do sacrifice that tree, right? And and then even though the issue isn't the garage, I would be more comfortable with a front loaded garage onto Morningside. But I'm really, I'm really uncomfortable with us passing a judgment on someone else's opinion or aesthetic.
I am. I just wanted to let you know that the owners, the potential owners are on the call. They just messaged me and they'd like to speak if you're willing.
Sure, that sounds great. That sounds great. Please put them through.
Can you hear us? This is Shane and Ellie.
Yes.
Hi, thank you very much for taking the time, you guys. I can tell you guys are being really thoughtful. And I haven't read through all the comments. I can tell you guys are out trying to address all of the neighbors and communities' needs around what's happening here with this fairly complex lot. We just wanted to bring up a couple of just points based on what you guys are saying. Obviously, size is one of the things. Obviously, size is one of the things that you're looking at, and we do have four children. And that could grow as well. And so that's one of the reasons why this, we chose this lot, because it's one of the bigger lots that we were able to find, given that it's 200 feet, feet long. And so we thought this was the most conducive to not feeling overpowered to the street, as well as the left side is, is more of a screen porch. I'm not sure how much it comes off, but, uh, in the pictures, but it will be less, I think, intrusive than what maybe it, it looks like right there in the photos. And also to the size, the, we were just looking at the house next door to the west, I believe, the one that's setback 29 feet, and it is the, almost the exact square feet as, as our home as well. Um, it's just oriented more to the north-south. And then in regards to the, the garage and the driveway off of Alden, our, our children were definitely a big part of that, both for safety, as well as for the rise overrun too, for our, for our parents as they get older, going up a steep driveway up into the house. That was a factor. Otherwise, the only way to do this was to take out most of the green space of the lot, which, you know, if we have to make a smaller lot with no green space, this really probably isn't a lot for us or for a lot of other families that might consider a diner.
And I think if, if the garage, if it was as simple as taking the driveway off of the garage where it currently lies and putting it out to Morningside, that would certainly be reasonable. The problem is that, and Kurt, I think can correct me, or Emily, but I think it's, can't come, the driveway cannot come off of the garage where it is on to Morningside because it is too close to the corner. And so the reason that the driveway is so far, is to the, closer to the house to the north is because it, it met the, and forgive me, I'm not familiar with exactly the numbers, but I think it had to be 500 feet from that corner. So that's why the driveway is, is pushed back a little bit towards the, the north side of the lot. So again, to change the orientation of the garage would require us to put it on the left, or put it on the west side of the house, which essentially just takes away from the, the backyard, which was a big deal for our kind of young family.
We would also need to take out three or four other mature trees on that west side of the lot in order to make, um, the driveway workable.
So I think, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I think it's not ideal to just have a garage on the Alden side. You know, I think we recognize that too. We were trying to make it as aesthetic as possible, just be, because the garage has to go, it has to be somewhere. And if it's that side versus all the way onto the west side, that's where we really had a, we had the difficulty. And the size, you know, it is 4,300 square feet, um, again, within six feet of this house, immediately adjacent to it. It just, it looks bigger because it's longer, but that's the reason that we would love to have a more square house, but the reason that it's longer is just because it's 50 feet wide. If you have any other questions as to why we kind of designed it that way, we'd be happy to answer. And thank you for giving us the time.
Well, thank you for jumping on and sharing your thoughts. I mean, it was very helpful. Does anyone have any further questions for the applicants? You know, also, trying to commission members, you know, if anyone has, um, let me ask you, actually, let me just pause there. Lou, do you have a question for the applicants? Because I'd like to also, before we make a motion, I'd like to give the applicants one more opportunity to say if you'd like us to vote, or if you'd like to think anything, make, you know, think further about this. But I, we'll be happy to vote, I believe, if you'd like us to.
If you do vote, then, if you say, if you say yes, then we're all happy and everyone's gonna have a good, nice day. If you happen to say no, then what, what would be the next step? Like I said, where do we come back? And we want it, you know, six inches shorter, or we want it, you know, nine inches or 15 inches narrower, which is gonna make the house longer, like Shane and Ellie explained.
Carrie?
In the back, taking down three more mature trees.
Thank you, Mr. Brecky. Sorry to interrupt you. Uh, do, yeah, I, are you? I was just gonna say, Carrie, I believe that there'd be two paths, right? If, if we say yes, they're good. If we say no, they have the right to appeal to council, don't they?
Correct, they do.
And please don't remind me that I mispronounced that word. I get that all the time at home, so. Yes, that would be your path. If, if we, if we vote no. And I'm, I'm sorry. Shane?
This is Kurt.
Oh, Kurt, okay.
Like I said, when we met with the, uh, when I met with Chris Ocker, you know, to start this process, we're meeting the, the guidelines of the city. Yes, we are asking for a variance because if you don't approve, I mean, if, if a variance isn't approved, if somebody else comes up, the owner needs to sell this property, somebody else is gonna come up, that house is over 100 years old, it doesn't have, the life expectancy isn't much longer. What, you know, what's the next process? Also, this homeowner might be stuck with a house that they can't sell. I'm just saying that. But, uh, the next applicant might say, okay, what is that magical number? Like I said before in the past, even though we are meeting the city's requirements for height, uh, square footage for the lot.
I think you're.
I would like to ask.
You'd like us to vote?
Yes, please.
Okay. With that, does, so then I'll bring it back to the commission members. Lou, do you have something? Because we can either have a further discussion or someone can make a motion. Lou, did you, what were your, what do you have further question, or?
No, well, I'd like to clarify kind of what I said in, in response to what, uh, some other commissioners have said and what the clients have said. So, uh, first of all, I'd like to emphasize very strongly that the driveway or garage problem is not an aesthetic problem. And that when I talk about neighborhood character, I'm not talking about the design of the house or, you know, how big the windows are or anything like that. I'm talking about the prominence of the garage and how the entire streetscape on Alden is garage, is 100% garage, okay? And I want us to think about something that the commission voted on just last year, which is the Greater Southdale Plan. And there was a lot of talk in that plan about building massing, right? And how buildings are oriented to the street. And this is an issue very much like that, where it's not so much that I don't like, you know, the color of the house or the cladding or, or the materials or anything like that. It's not to do with, with visual design. It has to do with, um, massing and how, how prominent it is on the street, uh, on Alden. So, and, uh, secondly, I have, I have no problem with, uh, I have no problem with the mass of the house. I would vote if they moved the garage to the west side of the house with the same massing of the house, I would, personally, I would be fine with that. I can't speak for the commission. And then to point out the, you know, what, what the client is saying is that, you know, they, they put the garage on the west side and they have to go past the garage to, um, get to the backyard. Well, the houses, two houses to, the house, two houses to the west, which is on Grime, actually has what would be their front yard, actually faces Grime as their backyard, and that's fenced in. So they've solved the problem that way. They have the garage, so it's a mirror image of the house. They would have the garage, they have their garage on the right side, and their backyard is what would be the front yard on Grime's end, which I think is a nicer view, even though it's fenced in, it's a low fence. And, uh, it, it is much nicer viewing from the neighbors across the street or somebody walking down the street. And then, um, the new house on Crocker that we approved last year, a year ago, that also has the garage. Again, it's mirror image, so the garage is on the east side of the house. I think it may be setback a little bit further from the street because I think they're using the space between the house and Morningside as their backyard, which is actually their front yard. So I, I guess the point is that there, there are multiple ways of addressing that issue without just saying this is an infallible problem. So I realize it's difficult, um, but I think it's, it's worth spending a little extra time solving that problem.
Thanks, Lou. Does anyone else have any comments, or would you like to make a motion, either for or against approval? I, I.
I can jump in quick.
Yeah.
Lou had just mentioned on, um, would you approve it if the garage was on the left-hand side, redesigned it? Would you approve the setback? I mean, I'm just asking a comment. I guess for everyone to answer, we moved it to the left-hand side.
I don't, I don't think we're going to, actually, I'm gonna interrupt actually on that, Mr. Brecky. I, I, I think at this point, we're just, I don't think we're going to say what we will approve. I mean, I, I think at this point, we're, we're probably just gonna, I don't think that's possible, actually. I, I, I think at this point, we're just gonna vote or not vote. I don't know. Carrie, what? I, I don't, I don't think we can say we would approve it. I don't mean go down the line and say, make this change and I'll approve it.
No, but I don't think you would have to do that, but you could, you know, if they would like to redesign and come back with the, you know, with essentially a revision to the plan for you to consider, you don't have to bind yourself to that. If, if they're not agreeable to that, um, then you could take action on, on what's before you tonight.
Yeah, because I, I think Lou's been pretty clear, but I, I suspect if we did that individually, we're gonna come up with a bunch of different things. And then, then we're just gonna add, then we're gonna ask to debate them until we resolve that. So I don't think we can be here until we all narrow our positions down.
I, I.
Jerry?
Yeah. I, I, my position is I think the commission has a plan submitted before then. Staff has reviewed it, made a recommendation. I believe we should act on what has been presented rather than, you know, any, and then obviously, the outcome of the vote, the, the reasons for how it, you know, that determination was made is probably pretty obvious. So I think the question is, do we, what do we, how we, how do we vote on the plan as submitted?
I, I agree with you. Does anyone else have any comments on the plan, or does anyone else wish to make a, a motion, either a motion to approve or a motion to recommend, uh, not approving? Okay. Joanne?
People are ready. I'm ready to make a motion.
You can make a motion anytime you want.
I would recommend denial, and I'm basing that denial on, and of course, I just closed, the fact that it's, um, I, that I believe that the variance will alter the essential character of the neighborhood. That would be my basis for the denial. Again, tying that to the garage facing Alden, where that's not occurring on that street. So that would be my recommendation.
I'd second.
Anyone wish to set, does there a second? Does somebody second that? Lou?
I second that.
Is there any further discussion on this? I think we've all shared positions that are similar to that or different than that and different issues. So I think our, our positions have been established. Does anyone have any further discussion or amendment on the motion? Jerry?
Just to be clear, so since the motion was for denial, depending on the outcome, does a majority against the denial, is that the same as saying the project is approved?
Not necessarily. The, the majority against denial doesn't necessarily mean anything is approved. We then have a second motion about whether to approve it. If a majority approved the denial, then we're, then we'd be done with the evening. But then it's not necessarily a recommendation. We'd have, we would have to have another motion at that point. Carrie, I saw you shaking your head. Okay. So any, good question though. You know, that, that actually came up. That type of question came much more, uh, when I joined the commission, we were having that discussion all the time about, well, what does a denial mean, you know, and we, we spoke to people on console. So that, that was a, that used to be a very common question. Any further comments or questions, or are we ready to vote? So the motion is to deny. It's been seconded and, and, you know, changing the essential character based on the garage itself. Other people have different opinions, but that is the motion. For ready to vote, Liz, could you do a roll vote? So a, so if you vote aye, you're voting in favor of denial. If you vote nay, you're not voting in favor of denial. If the nays, if the ayes are in the majority, then we've concluded, applicant could, you know, and we've concluded this matter. Applicant can then decide if they want to appeal to council. If we vote, if the majorities of the vote now are nay, we still haven't made a recommendation. We'd have to have another motion. So again, a vote aye is a vote for denial. A vote nay is a vote against denial. Liz, could you do a, a roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Chair Namarav. Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Nay.
Commissioner Thorson?
Nay.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
No, no.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Chair Namarav?
Nay. Okay, so we need another motion now. Would anyone else like to make a motion?
I will, I will approve, uh, I move approval of the variance, subject to the conditions and findings outlined in the staff memo.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Liz, if you could do the honors again, roll, the roll vote. An aye is a vote in favor of approval. A nay is a vote against approval.
Commissioner Agnew?
Nay.
Commissioner Olson?
Nay.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson?
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Chair Namarav?
You guys, you gotta stop doing this to me. I'm gonna vote nay on that one also. That's just, um, I guess I'm the problem here. Do we have any other motions? Carrie, can I make a motion?
I think you're gonna have to. Because you've gone, you've gone both sides now.
There is something said for both sides. I guess I'm the problem. Uh, so I have a question for you though, Carrie, and that is, I mean, because I would make a motion to deny, because of the essential character, uh, but it's more based on the, the amount of, uh, massing on Morningside. And is it, and I'm wondering, do we, that's my main reason. Do we need to have that reasoning there? Can we just have a general motion to den, for denial?
You could, we have to have findings for denial.
Findings for denial.
Yep. So you could add to the previous motion. You know, you'd be adding a second motion to the, the motion to denial. So it'd be the essential character based on the size of the home and the location of the garage.
Okay.
We may get a similar outcome, but.
Yeah, okay, I'll do that. And I'll, I'll base it, I'm gonna base it on the, uh, the amount of setback to Morningside. That'll be my motion, based on the, I guess, the re, the capturing all the reasons that, uh, people are recommending denial would be the placement of the garage and the, um, the, uh, too close to Morningside for this size of a structure. Is that work, Carrie? Is that fair?
Would work.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Liz, could you do a roll vote again? You're getting quite good at it.
Can I, can I have a quick comment or a question, or?
Is that Lou?
Yeah.
Yes, Lou. Yes, yes, definitely.
Okay, so if the client, so if we vote this way, and we're voting against the garage and we're voting against the, how close it is to the, to Morningside, the client presumably, I mean, we, we're not promising anything, but presumably because of those two things, the client would have to reduce the size of the house and change the garage presumably to go ahead.
I don't know if that's, I think that's the logical output, but I don't know if that's necessarily what has to happen. Is that, Carrie, does? Um, is that, Carrie, does, could you, my, does that make sense to you?
That's fine, that's fine. I don't need to labor the point.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? Okay, Liz, please.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Nay.
Commissioner Strauss?
Nay.
Commissioner Thorson?
Nay.
Commissioner Barubi?
Nay.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Chair Nemirov?
Aye, well, there we are. Now, we're, we haven't made any, uh, I, I said, so that, that motion wasn't approved either. Other than burpees, what other motions can we make here tonight?
Do we need a motion to send it back to the clients and say just, without, I mean, wasn't that another option, Liz, to just have them modify their design and resubmit it?
Carrie?
That would be a question for them, for the applicant. I got the impression they wanted you to take action on the proposal before you though. But you could offer that up again.
May I ask a question, please?
Sure, yeah, Mr. Brecky.
Once again, um, if you approve it, great. If you deny it, and you say you want it narrower, what's that magic number narrower? Um, if we go through the whole process again, it's like, yeah, still a little bit too close. And I'm kinda confused how a person can deny it and then a person can approve it.
Mr. Brecky, that's a, that's a great question. I, I, I guess I have a three-part answer for you. Uh, you know, the first, this is a four-part. The first part is, you know, that's the question I would ask if I were you. It's a very good question. My, the second comment is, whatever we say isn't necessarily binding. My third comment is, I may be the only person that's concerned about the frontage on Morningside. And I thought fifteen was a reasonable number instead of eleven. I don't know if anyone else, if that would change anyone else's vote, however. Um, and, and I don't know if, I don't know if we really can get into that tonight. I don't know if, I don't know if that, I don't know if we could. I don't.
Well, then the house would be six feet wide.
How many?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six?
That's pretty narrow. Then the house is gonna get longer and it's gonna look even worse, in your opinion, all along Morningside. Because the height's gonna remain the same, and if you narrow it up and make it longer like a shotgun house, it's gonna be more in, of an imposition in your mind, you know, on Morningside Road. We're, we're within the standards of the city that what they set as far as our footprint. So the footprint, I'm guessing, with a family of six is probably gonna remain the same. It's gonna be long and narrow.
I understand.
And with the four children, now they have to walk past the garage, have, have no green space, cutting down more trees. But to make it narrower, that's, that's tough. Because now it's, now it's gonna, you know, even they go even further west, less green space for the family. Of course, children, you know, where are they gonna play?
I'll, 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 I'll invite other commissioners to comment. I just wanna give one final comment, which is that, one of my fears during my time in the planning commission has been designing things while sitting in a meeting. You know, um, I, 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 I think another option could be simply for the applicants to just huddle again and perhaps come back soon. If, if we aren't able to come to a recommendation, we are, we're, we're, we're at seven members tonight instead of nine and, you know, and, uh, things could be different. I, I don't know. I, I, I'd invite staff to comment. I mean, if, if, if you, if you, I mean, if other people want to give more detailed guidance about what would work, that's fine. Um, again, I'm fearful of designing things while in a meeting. You know, staff, I don't know what are the options. I mean, how, how quickly could they come back? If they came back and said, look, we talked, and this is still where we think is best, and we want you to give us an up or down on it, how quickly could they, you know, how quickly could that happen?
Uh, well, that's up to them in terms of how quickly could they redesign. From what I'm hearing, if they were to put the house, the garage on the west side of the house facing Morningside, that seems to be what the majority of the commission may favor. Doesn't bind you all to that, but.
I think that's a fair reading. I, 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 and I'm also saying, what if they, what if the applicant just, you know, went offline and had a conversation? And said, look, we don't want to change one jot or iota of this. How quickly could we get them back on the, our, our agenda?
Well, we could put them on for our next agenda.
If that's what they wanted to do.
If that's what they wanted to do.
Okay, that's, that's, uh, two weeks from now.
So a question for you. I would probably dry it out on a napkin and, and explain it. Uh, this costs thousands of dollars. If I have the architect or the surveyor restake it, replat it, I have to have a new rendering, have, have the architect redraw it, you know, now we're talking thousands and thousands of dollars. So I'd rather have a thumbs up, thumbs down with a, with a napkin drawn rendition.
I think Carrie probably gave you the best reading of the tea leaves that you're gonna get.
Could you repeat what he said?
I think the applicant's asking you to take action, but if, if it, if it were agreeable to the applicant to revise the plans, show the garage on the west side, that was my general feeling from the planning commission that you may support. That doesn't give you a guarantee, and you're right, you would have to spend money to create those drawings.
Can I ask one more question? The, um, you know, if we put the garage on the, on the west side, that would imply that the three-season porch and patio would go on the east side, which would be essentially on Alden Street. You don't have the depth to put it behind the house with the five-foot setback from the north side. I'm trying to decide if it would be more appealing for the neighbors on Alden to look across to our patio with things that are on it or the garage. Because I don't, I don't really know, you know, I don't, we spend a lot of time outside with the kids, and I don't see us getting rid of the three-season porch patio area. Um, and so it's just a matter of, I don't know if, what, what's more appealing to them, I guess. What more, what would be more appealing to you? For further comment?
Chair Nemirov, if I could, for a second. So, um, to indirectly answer that question, I, I, I would say, you know, after your explanation about why you put the driveway where you did, um, and also the complicating factor of exiting, perhaps sometimes, um, in reverse, down a driveway onto Morningside, I can completely appreciate why that wouldn't be a preferred route. So there are multiple reasons for having that driveway on our, oh, Arden? Or Alden, um. Personally, if I lived on that street, I'd prefer the curb cut were on Morningside rather than Alden. But one of the things I would, I mean, we didn't hear from any of the neighbors regarding, regarding the driveway. And I'm pausing here cuz maybe there was one. So someone can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, but that seemed to not be the issue. For me, that was the issue, but it doesn't seem to be the issue for people in the neighborhood. And, and given your explanation, and particularly that you would need it further north because it had to be a certain number of feet away from the corner, that made sense to me. And then as far as the massing of the house, by the nature of it being long and, um, narrow, it's going to look bigger. But I don't think it's unrealistic to expect, you know, to build a thirty-foot wide house, um, to make you go twenty-six feet wide or certainly fifteen feet wide. Um, you know, I think, I think that does pose a difficulty. So that's why in, in reviewing those things, it made me think this, this is something that deserves to be approved. And, and that's why, you know, after, after questioning and, and discussing, that's why the proposal made sense to me. I, I completely appreciate what an awkward position it would be in to be told to go back and review something, but not being given guidance for what to review. Because it's expensive, it's time-consuming, you don't really know. You know, there's two people who aren't even here who are gonna have comments next time. So I don't know that it's really fair to ask you to come back unless we have something kind of specific. Um.
Could I jump in? This is Kurt, the applicant.
Yeah.
Could I request a yes or no vote?
Certainly, um, I, I think.
Sorry.
No, Sheila, go for it.
The last, the last vote was a proposal for or against the variance. Right? That was the yes or no vote?
With some stipulations, I believe they both had stipulations and, and then one person voted no one time and yes the next time. So with more clarity, I think if, if you just had a yes or no approval or disapproval without, um, other things tied to it, it'd be more clear for myself and the client, and my client.
So if I could jump in, we, we have to have findings. We have to have a reason if it's a, if it's denial.
Something. You're good.
Hey, this, um, I move approval of the variance subject to the conditions and findings outlined in the staff memo.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Before we go to this vote, I do wanna just say, um, to Commissioner Barubi's point or her question, um, there were comments online on the Better Together site specifically about the garage. Um, so I don't want to ignore those community members' comments. Um, I think that we should go for with the vote, but just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you. I appreciate you saying that. I couldn't remember if, if I had read it there, but I appreciate, but I think it was just one, right? The person.
Well, the first, the first caller mentioned it too. The first caller, he mentioned the driveway.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
I think there were two online. I think there were, sorry, Lou, sorry, you, please?
Yeah, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Other com, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I, I, Liz, uh, we have a motion to approve.
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Nay.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson?
Aye.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Nay.
Chair Nemirov?
Nay, and so the motion has been approved. So I think that concludes it. So this variance is now been approved. And that, okay, well, that, that was a very good discussion. I wanna thank the applicants for, for just being extremely informative, extremely patient. Uh, it was, it was an outstanding discussion. Planning Commission members, very good discussion, but we got to a conclusion. And I think, I think that's great.
Excellent. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I, I have some high blood pressure, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, and so that takes us to the end of the public hearing section of our meeting. And that takes us to reports and recommendations. Are there any? Uh, correspondence and petitions? Maybe one day we'll define the difference between reports and correspondence, but I, I think we received a lot of correspondence by Better Together, and we can all take note of that. Um, it seems to be pretty effective. Uh, chair and member comments. Do any members have any comments for the group tonight?
I, I have a.
Sure, Jerry?
Yeah, it, it's addressed to Carrie. Do you have an update? Has the council acted on an item the commission looked at? The parking variance at forty-five hundred France, has that been presented to council?
It was presented to the city council at their last meeting. They did the public hearing. We had a lot of feedback, um, but it was continued to their next meeting, so they will take action. Next Tuesday, the nineteenth.
Any, any other members have any comments or questions? Lou?
I, yeah, I just want to, uh, comment on a few of the, uh, projects that have been, uh, that were approved by the commission in the past few years um, that are, that are moving towards completion. So, uh, the first one is forty-five hundred France, which is the, the one with the parking issue that we were just talking about, and absent a parking issue, um, just the project itself, um, uh, they're putting up the facade now, and I think they're doing, they've done a great job. It looks like a great project. It'll be a great project for the, the neighborhood. Um, I think that project worked out really well. I just walked around Nolan Maines on, um, Market Street, and, uh, despite being completely empty because of COVID- nineteen, which is really kinda creepy, um, I think it's a fantastic addition to the city. I wasn't on the commission when, when, um, that was voted on, but I think the project, uh, is sure to make a DINA, uh, leader in this area. And I think it, it's a, it's a wonderful project, um, that, uh, has a lot of public, great public space and good use of sidewalks and such. Um, there's a few quibbles I have with it, but I think overall, it's just a really, really nice project. And I think the city's gonna be very proud of what was done there. Um, the third project is, uh, I think it's called Pentagon Village. It was where Pentagon Park was. And, um, I would say that project, which is only about a third built, unfortunately, isn't matching the two other projects and partly because of some of the things I identified with the pathway through the, through the development. Um, it's very awkward, and it looks just as awkward now that everything's paved over and, and the sidewalks are in and everything, and you have to do this weird zigzag to get through the system. So I think, uh, that has shown to be prob, be problematic, and it's, and it's a very inwardly focused project, unlike the other ones at, at Forty-fourth and at Fiftieth in France, where you're really exposed to the street and there's a lot of street engagement. I don't think we're really seeing that with this particular project. So I think that one was a, will end up being a mistake. But, um, anyway, I just wanted to give a little feedback on, on the projects that are out there. The other thing was that I had put a note together before I knew what was gonna be on this, on the agenda this, this week. And, and what it was is I have a tear down across the street from my house. And like I said, I live in the neighborhood not far from the house we were just discussing. And we have so many discussions on this commission about, um, you know, we have so many rulings that we have to do about setbacks and such. And, um, as I watched the house across the street being built, what I, what I see is that it's not the, how far the house is from the street that is good or bad, but the fact that it has this massive driveway in front of it and how the garage, although turned to the side, is a huge part of the front of the house. And it's like the house is set behind this, this giant garage and giant driveway. And I think that's something that, um, we need to look at as a city. And then the final thing is, uh, just that, uh, I sent in email that, uh, that Carrie forwarded to all of you today to watch these, uh, two wonderful, uh, videos, both are one-hour videos. One's called Why We Cycle, uh, and the other one is called The Lifeside City from Michael Koval Anderson, a world-famous designer in, uh, um, designer of cities in, in Copenhagen. So, um, I think there are things that the city can learn from how. I think there are things that the city can learn from how other great cities do things. And, uh, I think we're, we're making a lot of progress. We've done a lot of great things, but I think there's a long way for us to go. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Does, it, does anyone else, uh, have any other comments?
Uh, I had just a couple of things. Uh, first of all, uh, as you know, we're going to have a work session in two weeks. That'll be at 5:30 by the same technology. I do look forward to seeing everyone in person when we can and everyone's comfortable with that. Um. You know, this is an unprecedented era, and I think at some point we're probably gonna be thinking about how this changes how people approach design and all the, all other things regarding, you know, how people behave within, uh, communities. Um. But I didn't, I didn't mean to get so deep, but I look forward to our conversation on May 27th. We'll send some stuff out. It's a discussion. And I think the primary folk, primary purpose is for everyone to discuss and listen to what other people say, and hopefully we can come up with a nice plan, at least for some of these issues, and put together ordinances that we think, that we hope will help make Edina a better place. Um, I've also been soliciting members of the commission for ideas for other, uh, work sessions. I've gotten, uh, some nice ideas for some pretty meaty topics. And so if other people have them, please share. I, I look forward to any ideas that you have. Um, but I, I will say again, you know, kind of repeating what I just said a second ago, we're, we're off to a good start regarding submission of ideas. So, um, please, though, submit them to me. And if anyone wants to just talk offline and just say, is this a good idea? You know, feel free to reach out. Um, the other thing I wanted to share is that we're going to have a little change in membership. Uh, our student members change annually, and we'll also be getting some new student members, I believe, soon. I don't know how this uh, COVID-19 issue is affecting selections of students to commissions, but we should be getting new students soon. Uh, you know, I, I, I really feel sorry for the class of 2020 not getting to go through the normal prom and graduation and just being, you know, with your, with your friends and having your senior slump, which was very memorable and life-changing in my life. Um. So it's a tough time for the seniors. So I, you know, we're gonna get some new students. Also regarding, uh, our regular members. Fortunately, unfortunately, I mean, for us, it's completely unfortunately, Chris Douglas is going to be leaving. Uh, it's gonna be a shame. He, he's been on for a year or so, been a, been a tremendous, uh, addition to the planning commission i- in just the time he was on. But Chris, uh, as you know, is with a leading company with a lot of smart people, and they have offices all over the country. And I believe he's going to be working from another location now and living in another part of the country. So we wish, you know, I wish him well. It was a real pleasure working with him. Uh, my only, the only unfortunate is, you know, it's, it's a all-miss-having, working with him on the planning commission. Um, it's been my experience as long as I've been on the planning commission that there's, um, that the CDV Edina has tremendous, just amazing resources and quality of people that are eligible. I believe that there are alternates available. And Kerry, that, that, there probably are, the staff's probably looking through who the alternates are and figuring out how to, how, how and when that replacement would occur. Is that correct?
That is correct. There are alternates. I, I don't have the names though, or the name.
Do you know, do you know when the transition will be?
I would think it would be fairly soon, soon as possible.
Okay. I guess another thing regarding that, thanks Kerry, is that, you know, with, with, uh, Isabel Melton has also resigned and moved, she's moved on already and she moved on to things. We probably aren't gonna be able to have cookies, like we traditionally, our traditional cookies. And I, I, I will note that Liz is really up, you know, the last person left, Liz, really up the cookie game. And it's unfortunate we're not gonna be doing that, but maybe, you know, sometime in the future. That's everything else I had. Kerry, the next item. And does any, do any other members have any further comments? That brings it to you, Kerry. Staff comments?
And I don't have anything else to add tonight.
All right. Well, thank you everyone for a great discussion. Liz, I think we need a, do we need a motion for adjournment in a second? And then we need a roll vote for that?
Thank you, we do, Chair Nemirov.
Todd, do you make a motion?
I made a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second, second.
Liz?
Commissioner Agnew?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Strauss?
Aye.
Commissioner Thorson?
Nay.
Commissioner Barubi?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Aye.
Chair Nemirov?
Aye. But Todd, stay on.
I'm on Webex literally all day.
All right, everyone.
Just like work for me.
Thank you for a good meeting, everyone. Have a good night.
Okay.
Thanks.